Welcome to the February 9th zoning board of appeals meeting. Roll call, Nancy?
Member Gallo.
Present.
Member DeSalvo.
Present.
Member Palladino.
Present.
Karen McBride.
Present. I'd like to ask at this time, has everybody read the January 12th minutes?
Yes, I have.
Yes.
Is there any corrections, additions, or deletions?
Not that I saw. None for me.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to accept the January 12th minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tonight's agenda is follows. One, 7 Lincoln Avenue area variance. Two, we have Midland Avenue return. Three, 18 Bronx Street area variance. Four, 20 Underhill Street area variance. And five, 24 Oak area variance. At this time, I'll entertain Lincoln Avenue area variance. Would you please come up to the desk here? The applicant?
May I?
Oh, I see. At this ... okay, okay. What I'll do is I'll explain what they're looking for. The purpose, they're building a shed, put up, erected, eight by 10, opposed to a nine by eight. So, at this particular time, I'll entertain if anybody has prepared a declaration at this moment.
I have a proposed resolution that we grant this area variance.
May I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Number two, Midland Avenue. It's a return. Lisa, come up to the public, please. Up to the desk.
I'm Martin Hira, architect for the McGrath family from One Midland. We'd like to submit to the board two additional affidavits from neighbors that are in support of the project.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the first letter appears to be from a Jeff and Chris. I believe it says Simon, it's a little hard to read, at 106 Park Avenue, Bronxville, New York. Dear Board members, I understand that you are currently reviewing the appeals submitted by the McGraths of One Midland Place to expand their house. I hope you will grant their appeal. I wish them well in this endeavor. And the second is from Rocco Fiori at 3 Midland Place, Takahoe, New York. Dear Board members, I understand that you are currently reviewing the appeals submitted by the McGraths of One Midland Place to expand their house. I hope you will grant their appeal. I will agree only to these terms. Number one, no prefab. Number two, no use of driveway. And number three, stick frame building only. And that's signed, Rocco Fiori, July 18, 2010.
We'll certainly put that into our ledger, certainly to see that everything is ... if you'd like to proceed.
Yes, good evening. This is a return to the board. We had presented some months ago, proposal for redevelopment piece of property. It's a single-family house. The house existing right now is a two-story Cape, and we wanted to increase this due to family growth and to hardships that had been previously presented on economics and the trends that are out there for the real estate. In here with our family growth, we want to expand this to a three-bedroom house on the property. We seek a waiver for two zoning controls. One is the lot size, the minimum lot size for the area. I'd like to note to the board, this is an AP3 area. And the second waiver we're looking for is for side yard encroachment. We originally presented the board, there was a question about some front yard. There was a redesign, and I'm going to go to the board right now. There was a redesign of the house. The footprint had flipped the orientation of the house so that the encroachment of the potential of the front porch that was already covered as an entry is within the property line itself. The encroachment of any possibility of the front property line of encroachment of the front porch was mitigated by pulling, by flipping the house itself and pulling the front porch to the other side of the property line. The house proposed right now would have a one-story addition to it and a total gut rehab of the interior of the house to provide all the configurations for the stairs, the entry portion of the house itself, and to provide the needed space for living for the new family that resides there now. Question to board, and we're very sensitive, was some of the context of the area and the neighborhood. And we had provided illustrations and documentation of existing conditions in both plan elevation. We had done some mockups of the setbacks of both side yards and the context of the existing neighborhood where we do have two-and-a-half and three-story tall 1940 Circuit buildings that are out there. This building is much older than that. This was built, I believe, in the 1930s. And we demonstrated in these illustrations that there is a severity of encroachment, that this fits into context of the existing neighborhood on both sides of the street, and that we seek the board to grant us a waiver of those two issues, as the lot size and the side yard encroachments, to permit the building to rise the extra story in that footprint and to come out from this existing front yard, but within the front yard setbacks of the zoning.
Does anybody have any questions at this time?
Yes, I have a question. Architect, I think you said that your presentation is three bedrooms?
Yes, I think it's four. Sorry.
Four bedrooms.
I stand corrected, it is four bedrooms.
And it's one bedroom now, correct?
Right now, we have one bedroom.
I was on the board last time for the denial, so if I ask questions of you again, please...
That's not a problem.
Okay. You had mentioned hardship. I'm not aware of that. I mean, can you ...
Okay, right now, unfortunately, our demonstration prop was not here today. The family's was a starter couple, and they've had, lucky enough, had a healthy child all over right now, who's eight months?
Fourteen.
Fourteen months now old, and we have one bedroom, so we need a ... now it's a growing family, so we need an extra bedroom within that. And given the constraints of the site and the opportunity here, the owners would like to maximize their potential for this building for future children, for their family, and for possibly for themselves, as creating a master bedroom floor and the two bedrooms, which could be augmented off as a playroom some other time. Sure, Jim?
Just to further shed light on the hardship, the house actually was on the market for close to two years, and we were unable to sell it without taking a loss, without owing the bank money.
Okay.
So, we were unable to sell it. We're painted into a corner now because we can't afford to sell the house, given the housing market, but our family has grown, and that is the hardship presented both by the economy and the growth of the family.
Right, but I'm trying to get clear, though, with the jump from one to four bedrooms. I'm not quite clear on why all the way to four. I mean, it's quite a big jump.
If I had a crystal ball and I could tell you the economy is better and be able to sell the house in two years, we might reduce that. I could tell you that we love our son very much and we look forward to having possibly another child. And I cannot tell you the timeframe on that, because, again, no crystal ball. So, the question becomes is how do you not plan for a future when the future is so uncertain? I cannot tell you with any due certainty that five years from now, or even six years from now, we'd be able to sell that house, and I'm certainly not willing to put a family on hold indefinitely. And I think that's unfair to do to anybody.
Well, I mean, the three-bedroom is most, I mean, most family houses, a three-bedroom. Just curious about the fourth bedroom. I don't get me ...
The fourth bedroom is a very, it's a small space created basically by the design of the house. It's more of an office than a bedroom. My guess is that it would probably be used as a nursery first. It's small. I don't know how the specs in front of me, but it's not a sort of what you consider a normal-sized bedroom.
So, you live in the house now?
I do.
How long have you lived there?
About six years.
And where do you park?
I park on the street.
How's the parking?
It's icy right now, but most of the time, it's fine.
You don't have a problem finding a spot?
Most days, no.
The parking is a concern of mine. I mean, and what happened, one thing that I've learned in living in Takahoe very many years is that little children turn into big children, and big children get cars. And, you know, everyone is very concerned about parking in this area, and it'd be nice if we had a nice, big, fat driveway there.
I would love to put a driveway in there. And we looked at different scenarios, even in here, contest, as I was asking you before, there's a piece of grass right outside the land, the property that belongs to town. But as things stands right now, there are no viable options for a driveway. Now, I would be very interested, and I mean, very interested in engaging in that conversation if there's a solution out there, given the constraints that we have, and we would certainly welcome that. I mean, that's something, I agree with you. I think it would, if it's a possibility to put in a driveway, then we would like to exercise that. We have not seen that, given the current constraints, but...
Yeah, I don't see it either.
No.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Well, at this time, what I'd like to do is make, ask for a motion to open it to the public.
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, not hearing anything from the public, I'll close this portion of the public. I'll make a motion. Can I make a motion to close this portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there's no other questions. Have a seat. The next applicant is 18 Bronx Street, area variance, please. Just to let everybody know, if you, you certainly can come back next month on Midland, and we'll have a decision for you.
Good evening, Chairman McBride, members of the board. My name is Bob Stansfield. I'm an architect, engineer, and I'm here tonight representing Mr. and Mrs. Weisfeld, who are the recent owners of 18 Bronx Street in Takahoe. Mr. Weisfeld is with us here tonight. Weisfeld's purchased this house last fall. This existing house of about 1,600 square feet is a 100-year-old-plus house, like many dwellings on Bronx Street. This is sort of almost the last house, second-to-last house on the left of the dead-end portion of Bronx Street. There are two newer houses to the left and to the right of this dwelling, but the balance of the block are still made up of similar dwellings in age of this type and size as well. Weisfeld's have put a substantial amount of money in trying to bring the house up to their standards. They, this will be a three-bedroom house. It was a three-bedroom house with a very choppy second-floor layout. So, what we've done here in the plans, which I'll point out in a second, we've removed a number of closets and some wasted space and created at least three decent bedrooms on there. Two in the back, they have a two-year-old son now, and one, another child due within a month or so will occupy the other bedroom. And what we'd calling a master bedroom, even though it's not large size, would be in the front of the, front of the house as well. The first floor, again, is all existing with a living room, small family area, and we're renovating the kitchen and the house itself. A lot of work's gone into this house. Obviously, it's like the money pit when you open the walls, so you find a number of different things, a lot of reframing, structural elements that had to be replaced. But everything's being brought up to current building code standards, energy code standards, and certainly life safety with smoke detectors and things of that nature. Weisfeld's are seeking to do two things here before the board this evening. One is to move, get to the boards. Just to reference you again, this is first-floor plan, second floor with one, two, three bedrooms, walk-in closet sort of underneath the stairs going up to the attic space, which is really just a storage area. What the Weisfeld's are seeking to do is to expand the existing bathroom that's located here. This was the only hall bath previously. They're building another bathroom here in the hall, just a simple five-by-seven bathroom. This footprint was not even four-and-a-half by five feet where there had a bathroom before. It was like a four-foot tub with the claw feet, the old bathroom. So, not much can really go back in there. What they're seeking to do is to bump out this portion of the house, which adds up to about 35 square feet, bring this to the front line of the house, and expand this so they can have a master bath. The balance of the porch roof area, what they'd like to do is just create an open terrace area with a railing so they can have a balcony door going out to the front of their house, since there's no front porch on the house. The current front yard setback is 17.7, about 17 and 1/2 feet. What they'd be seeking to do is to bring that second-floor bathroom up to that line, again, just that portion of the house, as you can see in front elevation. What we're looking to do is have a small gap roof on it. It's basically 1/3 of the width of the house. We're trying to just keep in the same rhythm with the windows that are currently there. There's a similar dormer, if you will, on the house next door, so it sort of conforms with the design to the left of the house. They're also looking to build a deck in the back. There's a small platform in the back now, bringing this almost the full width of the house of 16 by only 10 feet deep, brings them within six feet of the side yard. The current house is five feet. We'd bring them within six feet where they require to have nine feet by zoning code. It's sort of an awkward spot. There are still some cellar, bilko doors that go down, and what we're seeking to do is to put a removable platform there for ever needed to move things down in and out of the basement. Where that nine feet would fall would sort of be right in the middle of the door, so it's sort of an awkward spot, but at least this deck would should only be about 18 to two feet off the ground. It's more of a platform than anything else, within 16 feet wide. Along this property line, there's a substantial row of six-foot, eight-foot doorway that screens this from their next-door neighbor. The Weisfeld's have spoken to the adjoining neighbor to the right, who's probably most affected by this, and they don't really have any issues with it. The house to the left, it's a duplex house, there are renters there, so he could not get hold of the owner in that case.
One question I have is, is there a possibility from the deck anyway in the back? You had said there's a storm-type situation underneath ...
Yeah, there's a cellar door, like a bilko door that goes down.
If you want to keep in line with that and have that open, in other words, to keep the deck up to ...
Up to that point.
That's right.
Right. That really only adds about two-and-a-half feet to the existing deck, and it's not that they have, you know, sort of a small yard back there, and it's trying to make this as a little sitting area with a table and a barbecue, things of that nature. That would probably give them about a 10-by-10 deck, which is sort of small with an access door coming out, so, anyway.
You have no problem getting through that door with this proposed deck?
No, we've done this before. We make it just actually have, within the deck itself, there's a removable panel you just take out.
Oh, so it'll be through the deck, I understand.
Yeah, right, and it's only still, again, about 18, 24 inches off the ground. It's not that far to get into it, so, yeah.
Actually, the new state code issue would allow you to access egress from your basement underneath your deck without doing anything. We changed it to 2010.
Okay.
Interesting.
Bill, what is the advantage to that? Maybe you can enlighten us.
Well, before, you wouldn't be able to go, you wouldn't be able to go there because that would be a required exit. But now, the state has allowed you to, if you put an egress window on there, you come out the egress window, and the state doesn't care if you have to climb 30 feet under the deck to get out. They now allow that.
Interesting.
Question on the master bedroom.
Yes.
That is the existing master bedroom now currently?
That's correct. That's the footprint of the bedroom, right.
And does it have closets?
There is a very small closet underneath the stair itself.
Underneath the stair?
Right, right. This actually is the closet door that goes into the current closet.
Oh, I see.
Right, yeah. The space behind here is really part, this is a very odd configuration currently on here. There's, well, was. This is sort of a small room. I don't, can't really describe what it is. I'm sorry. Currently, there's a line that goes here. There's a bedroom here, a bedroom here, and this is just sort of a small, I don't think it's considered a bedroom, maybe it's four bedrooms, but it's an odd space. They're all like 10 by 10, 10 by 12 rooms, so, you know, opening this up...
Excuse me?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, I think, I think...
Excuse me, do you want to give your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Andrew Weisfeld. I'm the owner of the house. The space, the space over here, this is all a closet over here. We made it a walk-in closet going underneath the stairs from the bedroom, and these are the two bedrooms for the kids over here. So, this, this entire area, this is really my wife over here, so the entire area is going to be a closet, so...
But the existing, existing floor plan is really three different compartments over here. Again, one of them is an odd space. I don't think it can be considered a legal bedroom at this point, but, but even with this configuration, these two rear bedrooms, only nine-and-a-half feet wide, about almost 12 or 11-and-a-half feet deep, and the front bedroom is 12 by 12 currently, and that'll remain the same footprint.
If I could ask, is there any other closet space for these existing, for the bedrooms upstairs, in the bedrooms themselves?
Currently?
Currently.
There are. There's actually this currently now, there's, the closets go right down here. One serves one room, one serves the other. And the bedrooms are about eight-and-a-half feet wide, and again, that's sort of an odd...
If approved, does this have to go to the planning board at all, the councilor, Bill? This is, yeah...
Certainly odd-looking in the fact it's being stuck in the front of the house.
Well, are they required to go, is what I'm asking.
Well, they're not required to go, but it would be...
Would it be your recommendation, Bill?
Well, it could be up to my recommendation, your recommendation.
Okay.
Because I can tell you that I've got a call from a couple of neighbors who had a concern about the fact that it was going to be stuck in the front of the house.
Well, it's added to the front of the house, but, you know, I think we've replicated the roof liner to make it fit in, but anyway. I know what you're saying, Bill.
Yeah, I mean, I hear it too. If you've gone and seen the house, I mean, we're really doing all we can to make this a really beautiful house, and we've invested, you know, a great deal of money into it to make it so, and we wouldn't, you know, we're not going to do anything to jeopardize the beauty of this house by adding an addition. Now, I can see some people have opinions, maybe it wouldn't, maybe it wouldn't look right, but, you know, our, one of our big concerns is making sure this looks as beautiful as possible, so it matches the rest of the...
A question, Ms. Weis.
Sure.
Rather than bumping out in the front here?
Yep.
Did you ever give consideration to putting the bathroom over where that walk-in closet is?
Well, we needed, we needed a closet somewhere, and we were hoping to have...
Well, you have closets now, existing closets, I understand, in the bedrooms.
In the kids' bedrooms, right, and we have that.
And you have it in the master bedroom too as well.
Right.
So, what would, what would hamper or what would discourage you from doing that, rather than bumping it out in the front?
So, do it, do we...
Put a bathroom in there.
Well, we were...
Because it looks larger, and certainly it could handle...
Yeah, but, you know, we were hoping to have enough closet space for my wife and I.
Well, you do, you do have it yourself, don't you, in the existing, your master bedroom, right?
Yeah, that's all I mean. It's a two-foot, two-foot by four-foot closet that's there currently. And these stairs, I don't show it over here, but the headroom is limited up to that point.
I'm only thinking, rather than cost naturally in bumping it out, and certainly the fact that it's coming out, that six-and-a-half feet, seven feet, whatever, the bump out, that, yeah, 6'4".
Yes, put it in here, yeah, I'm saying right.
To move the bathroom in here and move where this existing is here, make this the closet.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know how that would work with the plumbing and everything like that. I'd have to look into it, but...
Well, it's something you might want to take a look at.
You know, one thing we'd be concerned about is, you know, we do, and this is one of the big draws for my wife, is to have, you know, a nice, big walk-in closet. I mean, I hear what you're saying, you know, this, then you wouldn't have to deal with bumping that bathroom out.
That's right.
You know, but we, you know, we kind of see that bumping the bathroom out being a, you know, a nice thing, you know? We think it'll look nicer, and we think it'll, it'll give us, you know, everything we want, which is that walk-in closet and that bigger bathroom.
If I may, I did, I see that you are doing quite a bit of work on the house, and I think that's great. This board's decision-making process is not so much the aesthetics, it's really of the planning board, it's really of the logistics of the neighborhood. The mayor's counselor, the building inspector, what is the process on the, on the planning board on something like this? If we were to recommend it to the planning board, at what stage does that happen vis-à-vis what we're going to do?
Well, if you recommended it to the planning board, you would recommend it or refer it to the planning board for site plan approval. They would look at it, they would either grant or deny a site plan approval, and then it would come back to this board for the granting of the necessary variances before the official site plan approval is backranted.
Okay, thank you. I mean, that's actually, you'd be perfectly, something I'm a little more comfortable with. I mean, I would really, again, it's not our purview on aesthetics.
The reason we, I had said that, though, is the bumping out, because certainly from the front yard setbacks impedes, and certainly from the bumping out, the 6'4", certainly from the front yard, it, it's sort of like impedes, or it certainly comes into, hampers, or it, it's not, it takes away from the front yard setback. It imposes on the front yard setback, all right, with the bumping out.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to get across.
Okay. You know, I hear that, you know, you're thinking of putting this in front of the planning board, and, you know, of course, I'm here to respect whatever decision you make. We would have liked to get this in front of you guys earlier, but for whatever reasons, we haven't been able to, and this, this part of it is holding up the construction of the house right now. And the reason we bought the house when we did is our next baby's being born March 21st, and we're living in a one-bedroom apartment, myself, my wife, my baby, and, you know, soon-to-be other baby. So, you know, we're hoping, we're hoping that the house will be ready as soon as possible. And I guess my concern is that if this goes in front of another board, now, I don't, of course, I don't want you to just stand up there and tell me, "Well, then I'll just tell you no now." But, but my, my concern is that, you know, if we push it another month, that's another month they're not going to be able to be doing construction on it. That's another month of waiting. As it is, I'm not sure when we're going to get into the house. The estimated time when I started with the contractor was the end of February. There is no way we're getting done by the end of February, and I don't see any way right now of getting done even, if you, if you said tonight, yes, Andrew, go ahead with with the plans, we're still, I don't think, going to get done by the end of March. If we wait another month, you know, it's just a significant amount of time, and, you know, we really don't have space now.
Well, unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. What we have to do as a board is we certainly evaluate every particular case, and it's the time factor. We'd like to certainly assist you in any way we can, but unfortunately, it doesn't happen that way. There's a certain formula that we use that we have, we go back and we review, and we make sure certainly, we wouldn't want to do the wrong thing by anybody and set a precedent down a line that we'd be sorry for. So, that's why we, the time factor is, unfortunately, is what we have to do.
I mean, I would, I hear what you're saying, but I would agree with the chairman. The process is the process. I mean, I would just speak for myself. I was very impressed with the work that you're doing, and, I mean, it's just great to have you here in this great village, and we would try, I mean, I myself would try to do everything I can to move it along, but I would feel much more comfortable, you know, hearing from the planning board on this.
Okay. Can I just ask, Bill, what the timing is with the planning board scheduling, if you know offhand?
Is there any way in the world to get on the next Monday agenda, or it's just too late?
I don't think we have time to notice. Now, is that just a recommendation to the planning board, or is that actual, a site plan approval in essence from...
It would be a recommendation.
Recommendation, okay. And that's something that has to get a legal notice as well, just as a...
They would incident, I couldn't incident.
Unless or more, I think what you're concerned is you want the, the planning board to look at the aesthetics of the addition that's gonna be presented, correct?
Right.
So it's really not, big concern of the site plan as much as how it aesthetically is gonna look on the building.
That's right.
I think they got a full meeting this Monday, you know, the time of year. Do we, the public hearing is open, is that, is that correct?
Well, we haven't made a motion.
Okay. That would put your zoning board approval not until April, if it were to be approved, my opinion, if I'm correct in saying that.
So that's just, that's the approval, and then you start work, and then it's about another month, right? So then we're talking not getting in the house.
Unfortunately, like I had said, you want it done right, and certainly, we want to make sure that in the procedures are right, that certainly from the site review on, from the planning, that they see that it's certainly, coming back here would be the following month, all right? And in most cases, if it does, we'll be looking, and I'm sure that we will, at, at your plans, and there could be a resolution even from that point, which would be a couple of months out, all right? So, so, but we'll be following, following your case. But we want to certainly see from the, the planning board as to where, what they suggest.
How long have you lived here? I'm sorry, how long? How long have you lived here?
I haven't lived here at all, yet.
You haven't moved in yet? Well, I can assure you that I understand, I completely understand the frustration you're going through, and I would just, you know, hope that you'll be very long-term residents here, and I think down the road, as you become an involved resident in this, in this great community, I think you'll grow to appreciate the fact that the wheels of this do move a little slower, and they do for a reason, and down the road, I think you'll understand a little bit clearer, from a different perspective than the seat that you sit in today.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I hear you, I hear you. I just, I just have to figure out if we can do this, or if...
It certainly can be frustrating, but it's, it's to your benefit, believe me.
Over time, it is to your benefit. Do we want to open the public hearing, and obviously if there's any input, I think this way we can expedite next time?
I'm just about to do that. Okay, at this time, what I'd like to do is make a motion that we open it to the public.
Moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public on, on the applicants? Well, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Do you want to make a motion, if you desire, to refer the applicant to the planning board?
I'll make a motion at this time to, to, to the applicant to see, seek the planning board's...
Recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring up 20 Underhill Street area variance, please.
Good evening, I'm Maggie Marone, the architect of Mr. and Mrs. Fawn, who live at 20 Underhill Street. They live in a two-family house, they live in the first floor of the house, and they rent out the second floor, and they'd like to make a finished basement, they currently only have one bedroom in their, one, their first floor of their house. So in the basement, they'd like to add another bedroom, a bathroom, and a playroom area. And it's, the existing house is not changing in any way on the exterior, it's kind of a half, almost more than half a story above grade at the basement level, so they have windows there already, they have a door there, and access, and they, but it, because they're adding livable space, they're going over there maximum that they are. And also, the way the house is situated, it's a non-conforming house, and they are right up against, actually, right here, the town hall property on one side, and the driveway's on the other side, so they don't have any kind of barrier between their property, it's just the way the house has been since it was built.
What's in this ba-, basement now?
Right now, it just, it's, um, storage unfinished.
It's a storage basement?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's just like not...
What has it been used, has it been used prior for any, is there anything that it was used for?
It's just, yeah, it's just a, I don't think it's been used for any, much of anything really, storage and things like that. They have a furnace room.
How many bedrooms is the apartment upstairs?
One.
One bedroom?
Yes.
Who uses the driveway?
The owners and their tenants.
Both?
Yes.
How long have they lived there?
Three years.
Three years.
Three years.
And you're living in, in a one-bedroom for three years, and now you need additional bedrooms?
Well, it's one extra bedroom.
One extra bedroom.
Well, I know, in discussing this matter, one of the concerns of the board is that the basement will be used as a rental property.
Uh, no, it can't be a rental property, well, it's not going, they're gonna keep it, keeping staircase in there, it's, it's access to the first floor, it's not separate in any way from...
What about outside? Is there any access outside now?
There's, yeah, there's existing, there's two exit, doors right now, there's a rear door and a side door onto the driveway, but those have been existing.
And this would entail a playroom, a bathroom?
And a bedroom.
And a bedroom?
Yes.
Now, the bathroom on the main floor is a full bathroom currently?
Yes.
So another full bathroom downstairs?
Yes.
Now, how many vehicles with the house currently?
Three.
Does that include the tenants? So you have three vehicles now? The floor is concrete floor?
Yes.
And bathrooms again, one upstairs, two downstairs? Or one, two upstairs, one downstairs?
No, no, there's one on the main floor, I'm not sure what's on the second floor that their tenants are...
I'm looking at shower, you just proposed basement. Shower?
They're putting it a full bed?
Yeah, but I, I didn't know if there was one or two. Where's the first floor?
They don't have it.
Okay.
They don't have it?
They're only showing us the basement part. Oh, wait, hold on.
Well, it's for, the bathroom is for the bedroom that would be down there, accessible.
No?
It's just a site plan. They're only showing the, they're only showing the basement.
Basement. You have to realize, there's a lot of thought that goes into this, because unfortunately, what happens here is that we look upon bedrooms, bathrooms, family rooms, as possible rental situations.
Right.
And it can certainly happen, you gotta remember, our decision goes with the property, so nothing alters or changes. If you decide to sell, we, we have that, there's a problem. So there's a lot of consideration has to go into this before we, really, as a board. What kind of heat do you, you have, how do you heat your house down?
Gas.
Gas, okay.
Oil, no, oil.
Oil. It's another factor, okay? What you have here is certainly, I don't know, not seeing it, and I think we will come out to your location if, if it's convenient to you, we, we'd like, we certainly want to, we'd like to see what your intentions are in doing this. With oil, you need firewalls, all right, because if it's a livable, living area down below, this, I don't know what the construction is down there, as to the...
Uh, it's a concrete block, you know, construction.
Block room, or block...
Oh, well, we would do, we would certainly make it to code, it'd be, have to be two hours of 5A sheet rock.
Right, well, it's just a concern naturally that we would have, that, you know. And exist, you know, ventilation, if it's properly ventilated?
Yes, oh, everything would have to be to code.
Yeah, to code.
Yeah, the, the parking is always a concern.
And parking too is a concern, and certainly, based on the building, it increases the floor area ratio as to the property size, so you gotta consider...
Right.
Parking is also another issue, that, you know, you have here, three cars in a... Is there any questions? At this time?
Do we want to open it to the public? Do we want to open it to the, do we want to, do we want to open it to the public?
Yeah, we'll do that, there's no other questions right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thanks.
And at this time, what I'd like to do is ask for a motion to open it to the public?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing nobody here from the public, I'd like to close that portion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Last and least, best of best. Good night out. Twenty-four oak, area variance.
Currently unperceived?
No, I'll show you photos. Give you a presentation. Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, my name is Michael Picarello, I'm the architect, representing Greg and Joanne Colbert. Many years ago, Greg Colbert purchased his property, it's an existing two-story house, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and since purchasing, purchasing the house, eleven years ago, he was married last year, now they have a brand-new baby boy, so their life has changed quite a bit since he purchased the house, and thus is looking to expand it to suit his, his new family. The three bedrooms they have right now are substandard for bedrooms, for typical bedroom sizes, in fact, one of the bedrooms says he had a closet. So, we're here to apply for a, a, five zoning variances. We were here several months ago, and received those comments from the board, and tried to adjust the project accordingly. Certainly, we can't do anything about the lot size, which obviously is a big issue. The existing lot size is, is substandard to, to the current zoning. Again, can't do anything about that. The proposed addition would be, instead of having a, being twenty percent over the required FAR, we're down to fifteen percent, so we're now looking at a 0.5716 FAR. Again, taking into the comments from the board last time into account, trying to, you know, improve that project. In doing that, we actually lessen the rear yard setback, we're now down to sixteen feet. So again, we, we hopefully have, hopefully have satisfied the boards in, in the attempt to reduce the amount of the variance required. Because of the existing non-conforming side yard setbacks and the lot size, there is great difficulty in trying to give them a, a larger home without impacting some of these variances. The, I feel that because the addition is, is completely in the rear, there is no rear yard, there is no rear neighbor, that the, the, the project will not impact the neighborhood at all. You probably, most of the neighbors, most likely wouldn't even be able to see the addition in that. And it certainly, you know, I think will have a positive impact for them to be able to stay in their home. Currently, that block is, has a lot of, or mostly is, multi-family houses. So again, they would hope to be able to increase the size of the house so they can stay, so...
Can you just explain to us the, the types of changes you made? I mean, I know I am, and I think the rest of the board is somewhat familiar with your proposals from the last meeting that you presented, but can you just detail what the, what the changes are, what you did?
Sure, actually, quite simple. We, on the...
Maybe you'd like to go to the board here, and, and take the, the mic over here, and point that out for the plans as to what you've done.
Sure, the, again, very simple, we simply pulled the rear, the, the rear portion of the addition back towards the front, that's as simple as that. By lopping off the first floor, we actually had a walkout bay on the first floor, we got rid of that, and then we pulled the entire back house in approximately, almost two feet, not quite, but almost two feet, to, again, to try to reduce that FAR, to reduce the rear yard setback.
Right.
And again, because of, you know, like I said before, because of the existing side yard, we're not encroaching any further into the side yard, we're actually maintaining those lines, and again, because of the fact that there is no rear yard, if you've been out to the property at all, you know the topography is, is really extreme. They have basically a cliff in the rear, and then in the front, they also have a very large precipice, or a very large retaining wall that actually is right next to, to the sidewalk.
Right.
So there's, there's very little areas to, to work with.
Right.
Is that satisfied, Mr.?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very, very good, thank you. Any questions from the board at this time? If not, what I'll do is, I'll make a motion to open it to the public.
Second that motion?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Seeing nobody in the audience.
If, if you'll mind me...
Sure, please.
Be one more comment. Again, we've been through, this is our, this is our second meeting, and it's certainly a, a great sign that none of, none of the neighbors have any issues with it.
Right.
Greg has spoken to many of the neighbors, and even though they don't have, they don't have letters, you know, stating that fact, the fact that, to me, the fact that they haven't made an appearance is...
Well, certainly, certainly that might be, it, it's always good and supportive to get letters.
Sure, I understand.
It really is, it's, 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 it's really a help in making a decision, finalizing a decision. I could only suggest, if you have that next time, to bring it in with you, certainly, I, we'd all appreciate it from the board to see support like that, and if not, the presence, whether, you know, for or opposed, we'd like to see that as well.
Okay.
So, keep that in mind. Great, keep that in mind. And with that, again, I'll make a motion to open it to the public.
Second that motion?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Seeing nobody, I will close that. In fact, what I'll do is I'll keep the portion open, the public portion open, I'll ask for a motion to keep that public portion open.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, are there any other questions from the board?
No, I'm good, thank you.
No.
And if not, I'll ask for a motion to close the meet, the, the meeting. And if not, I'll ask for a motion to close the, the, the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I should've said adjourned.
We have to...